Okay, hello and welcome to the last council countdown of 2024. If I'm correct, um, I'm Chloe G. And here with us is Hannah Nichols, our public information officer. So thrilled to have everyone tuning into the meeting and thank you Hannah for joining me here today. I know it's been a, you know, a crazy end of the year here at Beaufort County, but um, hopefully this is the time we can just take and give you guys some much needed updates. Tonight, we have our final county council meeting of 2024. There's a packed schedule, so before we jump in, just reminding everybody that can uh, always view our meeting's schedules, minutes, agendas, and packets online at beaufortcountysc.gov. So I'll let Hannah take it away and tell us a little bit more of what we can expect tonight.
Thank you so much Chloe, and thank you viewers at home for joining us for this final council meeting of 2024. Um, we are gonna start tonight at 5:00 PM. And as usual, just like every other meeting, we're gonna start with that administrator's report from county administrator Michael Moore.
Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties. Um, Hannah's mic is not on or it's not working. If I need to, I can always pass this mic on over to her, which I might go ahead and do while we're waiting. If you wanna give us more of a recap.
Sure, um, thanks for bearing with us. It wouldn't be the year end if it wasn't a little bit more exciting, right? Um, so just as I was saying, we do have a packed agenda tonight for county council's last meeting of 2024. We are gonna get started tonight at 5:00 PM. And as usual, we're gonna start with the administrator's report from county administrator Michael Moore, followed by citizen comment, and then council members are gonna give us their liaison and committee reports. As we move into action items, we are going to see a discussion on the third party review of the Mitchellville Appraisals authorized by the Community Services and Land Use Committee back in September. Then we're gonna see a third reading of an ordinance that appropriates funds from the state A tax funds. Item 12 is the second reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 25 budget to use the general fund fund balance to purchase fleet vehicle services and equipment. And then item 13 is gonna be the first reading of an ordinance amending the community development code. Then we're gonna see an item come up about the county administrator accepting a right of way or temporary construction easement associated with the Stewart Point Road sidewalk project. That is one of our 2018 sales tax projects. Um, you can always check up on those at beaufortcountypenny.com. And then we are going to see uh, the first reading of an ordinance investing 4.3 million from the general fund in an infrastructure development project at Beaufort Executive Airport that would fund the construction of additional hangars. Um, so we had some interesting discussion on that item at the last committee meeting. I'm interested to see what council thinks of it tonight. Then we're gonna see the potential approval of the purchase of license plate reading cameras from the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office that's gonna use ARPA funds. And our final items of the night are the approval of next year's calendar and the appointment of Patrick Mitchell to the Stormwater Management Utility Board. That was a super quick run through of everything we're gonna be covering tonight. So if you're looking for more information, definitely check out our website at www.beaufortcountysc.gov. We've got all the agendas, the summaries, and the packets there for you.
Yes, that was a lot, um, but our wonderful new addition to Beaufort County Television, Tim Lyons to the rescue with the microphone. So now we're gonna move on to some announcements. The first one, we want to invite the public out here this Friday evening to the Beaufort County Christmas Tree Lighting. The event is going to be held from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the Beaufort County Courthouse Plaza, which is located at 100 Reba Road. The goats, the gates will open at 5:30 PM, and this is free to the public. There's gonna be a special appearance from a guest from the North Pole.
I wonder who.
Oh, guess we'll see. You'll have to come out. Um, there's gonna be uh, some face painting as well as activities and games, food trucks, of course, music and singing holiday carols. Parking is available at the main administration building on 100 Reba Road, like I mentioned.
And that's a super fun event, so definitely bring your kids out. Maybe they'll get to meet our local celebrity. And I think our food trucks this year are Gullah Express and Sassy Suites. So you can even pick up some dinner while you're here.
Love Gullah Express, one of my favorites.
So we would like to congratulate Nexus Care of Beaufort County as they are celebrating their 50th anniversary of service to our community. Since its beginning in 1974, several programs and services have been designed to help individuals, families, and the community. For some, these programs and services are a requirement of the law. For others, they are a requirement of life. Our department's mission is to reduce the negative impact of alcohol and drugs in Beaufort County by providing its citizens with person-centered prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery services. If you are looking for assistance, you can visit the website at beaufortcountysc.gov to learn more.
Yes, um, congratulations to them on 50 uh, years. Um, the next one, the Beaufort County Register of Deeds Office, AKA ROD. Patty Green wants to remind all county homeowners that the county ROD offers a service to provide property owners with email alerts anytime a document affecting a name or specific property is recorded by the county register of deeds. The property alert service immediately sends an email notification whenever it is recorded with the owner's name or property ID, which it could be district, map, or parcel. And this service is free of charge to homeowners. Property owners should contact law enforcement if there's a reason to believe that fraud has occurred. You're encouraged to sign up for this service by visiting the Beaufort County Register of Deeds websites and following the links to register. Some things to know, there is no limit to the number of subscribers for a particular property, legal description, or party name. This service is for individuals who want to know if fraudulent activity has occurred under their name or on property located in Beaufort County. Owners may also wish to register the name or legal descriptions for properties of elderly loved ones to protect, help them, to help protect them from scams. The property alert service is for any type of land owned in Beaufort County, whether occupied or vacant. And any document with a party name and/or legal description pertaining to real property is included. There are more than 70,000 documents recorded annually at the Beaufort County Register of Deeds Office. The only time recordings can be refused is when statutory guidelines are not met. If you would like more information regarding this subject, please call the Beaufort County Register of Deeds at 843-255-2555.
Thank you so much Chloe. And the Beaufort County Passive Parks Department would like to remind everyone that they have an exciting and free nature educational program schedule with birding, trail walks, and special events to help you take it outside. You can join our naturalists this week at Whitehall Park on December 12th at 9:00 AM for birding, or they are also offering a brand new program called Crystal Lake Critters uh, on December 15th. And I didn't write down the time, so you're gonna have to go to beaufortcountysc.gov to look at that time and the entire schedule.
They also posted on our social media, so of course you can always go check it out there.
And I just have to note, we didn't coordinate on purpose, but we do look fabulous.
Yep, purple, bringing in the, you know, the last meeting of the year in purple. And even um, Ms. Tab up there has her purple coat uh, behind her. You guys will see later once the meeting starts to begin. Um, bringing it back and talking some more about Nexus Care of Beaufort County. In partnership with the Beaufort County Library System and the Beaufort County First Responder Project, they're gonna be offering free naloxone, a life-saving nasal spray for opioid overdose reversal. Um, this is gonna be available on Monday, December 16th, beginning at 3:00 PM until 7:00 PM at five different locations at the library branches. The first one, of course, the Bluffton Branch Library at 120 Palmetto Way. The Hilton Head Branch at 11 Beach City Road. The St. Helena Branch at 6355 Jonathan Francis Senior Road. The Lobico Branch until, only until 6:00 PM. So if that's where you're planning to go, please note that they're only going to be offering them until 6:00 at 1862 Trask Parkway, or the Port Royal Branch at 1408 Paris Avenue. It's gonna include a five-minute training that helps people understand how to identify the signs of opioid poisoning, how to help someone who may be experiencing opioid toxicity due to prescription misuse, accidental exposure to opioids, or use of non-prescribed drugs laced with fentanyl. No appointment is required, and everyone participating in the five-minute training will of course, receive a free supply of naloxone nasal spray.
Those trainings are so critically important, and you get a product to take home with you that day. Keep it in your purse, keep it in your office, and it, you never know, you could help save a life.
And if you can't make it that day, they, they do have these events scheduled throughout the year, and you can always stop by and pick up a free one. So don't fret, there will be more opportunities.
Fantastic, and we would like to thank you, as we kind of wrap up this segment, for tuning into BCTV today. You can view all of our programs on cable channels, Sparklight, Comcast, Spectrum, and we stream live on beaufortcounty.tv. We also have a free BCTV app available on Roku, Apple TV, Android TV, and Amazon Fire. Beaufort County Television has also recently launched a new channel, available 24/7, the Beaufort County Traffic Camera Channel.
And don't forget, you can always check out latest Beaufort County news on our website at beaufortcountysc.gov, where you can sign up for the email list or follow us on social media. So it looks like in just a few minutes, the meeting will be starting. So thank you, and thank you Hannah, once again, for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Yep, so stay tuned for our final Beaufort County Council Meeting of 2024.
We do have 10 of the 11 members in council chambers, and one member, Mr. McCollum, is online. So therefore, we do constitute a quorum to conduct the business of county council. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would ask a member of a coun, for council to move and approve a change in tonight's agenda. If you take a look at our consent agenda, you will see that item number four and item number six are duplicates. So would I, I would ask a member of council to amend tonight's agenda to remove item number six, which is a duplicate of item number four.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Tavernick makes the motion?
I'll second.
Uh, Mr. Bartholomew makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, item six will be removed from the consent agenda. We're now asking for a motion and second to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Dawson makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Bartholomew makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, the amended agenda is approved. Item number five is the minutes of October 18th and November 12th of 2024. A motion and second, please?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman. I'll second that.
Ms. Howard and Ms. Brown make the motion and second, duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved for October 8th, October 28th and November 12th, without objection, and we see no objections. We now turn to our administrator's report. Mr. Moore, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Council. Um, this evening, I just wanted to, before I start, to recognize the folks, just elaborate on some discussions we had last week. Uh, per request, county administration council leadership met with uh, our Hilton Head counterparts to discuss the Highway 278 project. As you're all aware, as a result of the failure of the transportation sales tax referendum, both SC DOT and the State Infrastructure Bank, or CIB, have provided a deadline of March 31st, 2025, to make a decision regarding the project. SC DOT has further indicated that the 278 eastbound bridge is at risk in the future of being load limited, which could impact its ability to support larger vehicles accessing the island. Additionally, DOT has indicated that rehabilitation is an undesirable option, a current estimate of 50 million being needed to add just 10 years to the bridge's lifespan. Given this, it's important to have dialogue with the town and our counterparts to address the future of the project. As a result of meeting, county staff will be reaching out to DOT to schedule a meeting to better understand the cost estimates associating with replacing the span, the bridge spans, to determine if there are other options available and how we're gonna handle the project. Um, this information, of course, will be shared with uh, with council for discussion. And uh, any further decisions regarding the future of the project will obviously be brought forward uh, to council for consideration and deliberation. So, um, with that, any questions? I'll continue with our recognition.
Can I just ask just one quick question?
Sure.
With this meeting that took place, the only thing I asked was a big dust-up, a big firestorm of people calling me as to a meeting, and I had no idea of it.
Sure.
I don't mind not being involved with meetings, which I'd like to get noticed, but any type of way we could be notified, so when we get these calls, however this leaks out, it leaks out. I just wanna be up to date ahead of time, if that makes any sense.
It does, and, and we're actually, we're, we're gonna release a joint press release with the town tonight, so. It's a fair point, and we'll just make sure, we, we wanna keep the continue, we wanna keep the dialogue going. Obviously, we can't have 11 members at the meeting, cause that would constitute a quorum, but fair enough. But I did wanna report out on what we discussed at the meeting.
Mr. Moore, appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
That's okay. Um, it's regarding the bridge, so we have until March of next year.
Yes, ma'am.
Why don't we just fix the bridge? Like the state come in and just fix the bridge. You've been talking about it for seven years now.
Well, I understand.
They, to fix the bridge costs 50 or more million dollars. It doesn't add that much life to the bridge, so it is.
That was what DOT said in the letter. They would prefer not to do that. And I think, you know, as we discussed previously, there is, there are funds committed to this project right now. Part of that is 80 million from the referendum, so there are funds that are available to go towards this project. But we just wanna apply the funds that are available in the best way possible. But to your point, the 50 million dollars that DOT would use would only prolong it for 10 years, is what they said in the letter.
Okay, so if they fix the bridge, but my idea is to run another, build another bridge alongside the bridge that the eastbound named, right? Build another bridge, and Senator Tom Davis and I grew up in the same state, same county, and we took the Chesapeake Bay Bridge numerous times. And what they did, and what Philadelphia did and New York did, is they built a bridge alongside the bridge that was, was bad, and then they tore, once the new bridge was built, they tore, they all went down. Is that what we're gonna be doing?
Um, I mean, that's a possibility, but those are things we're gonna talk to state and come back and, and bring more information back to council.
Cause I think that's where we should go, and we have the money to do that.
Right, but we'll ask that question with this, with this, when we have that discussion with the state.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Uh, we'll move to recognition of county employees. Um, first off, we have Hal Yeomans from Emergency Medical Services. Here we go. Uh, his position title is Deputy Director of Emergency Medical Services. Um, 46 years.
Forty-six years.
That's impressive. He's been an EMS technician, a paramedic, a crew chief, a senior crew chief, training officer, and deputy director, which is what you're serving at presently.
Yes.
Okay. Um, he assists the Director of Emergency Medical Services in the operations of the department, plans and develops new procedures, formulates policies, and assists in the budgeting and financing process. He also assumes responsibility for the department in the absence of the director, something unique. Um, he's a member of St. Helena Baptist Church, the Masonic Lodge, the Ancient and Accepted Scottish Rite, and Omar Shrine. He taught EMS, intermediate EMT, and paramedics classes for over 30 years. Successfully completed grants through the federal government for cardiac monitors, which was a tremendous savings for the county, as well as securing state-of-the-art equipment to provide the best service to the patients. He and his wife enjoy traveling and riding motorcycles, and he has dedicated his life to serving others, so. Congratulations on 46 years.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Any comments?
The only thing I have to say is it's been both rewarding and a pleasure to work for Beaufort County EMS, excuse me, and work with a lot of experienced, knowledgeable, and very good EMTs and paramedics. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get a picture. Okay, next up, we have from the Otter's Office, uh, Ms. Samantha Demay. There she is. Uh, her position title is Personal Property Tax Analyst 2, and she's been with the county a little over a year. Um, Samantha ensures that the Otter's Office always follows state and local laws, assesses, calculates, and creates taxes for motor vehicles, watercraft, and rental properties for both individuals and businesses, processes abatements for refunds and/or write-offs, and communicates concerns with taxpayers in the office via email and telecommunications. She also processes applications for personal property tax exemptions for homesteads, the military, and the Department of Revenue. As a true public servant, Samantha enjoys answering public questions and concerns while maintaining a positive attitude. This has led to many positive surveys. And this is one that was received in November, um, this just past November, from a citizen. Um, they said, quote, "I want to take a minute and share what an amazing employee you have in Samantha. I called today and waited a very long time on the phone. When she answered the phone, she is poised, responsive to my many questions, and never rushed me. She took the necessary time to address my concerns, was very articulate, and explained to me what needed to be done to address the issue. With the Beaufort County property tax bills going out, I understand just how hectic your employees may be feeling with the inundation of telephone calls, but I never felt rushed or cut off while working with Samantha. Again, when someone renders outstanding customer service, I believe it's important to recognize them. Thank you Samantha, and thank you for taking the time to acknowledge um, her outstanding work ethic. My sincere gratitude, so thank you for that."
Wow, very good.
It's not often we get compliments like that, so we wanted to take full advantage of those that we get them.
It's a big deal.
Uh, and something unique, Samantha likes to bake, crochet, and work with crafts, so.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Any comments, sir?
Um, sorry. It's nice when hard work's recognized, so I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and um, just everything that I've learned from Beaufort County in general this past year, and some change. So just grateful to, to be here and to be serving the public. Thank you.
Okay, last, from mosquito control, we have Gerard Houston. He's coming up. Uh, his position title is Mosquito Control Technician. He's been with the county for four years and 10 months. Welcome. How you doing, Howard? Good. Um, summary of job duties, Jared conducts mosquito surveillance, larva sighting, that's complex, and adult sighting activities to control the population of mosquitoes. Uh, Jared works to prevent the spread of any mosquito-borne diseases all while making, making living or visiting in Beaufort County more enjoyable. Something unique about the employee to share publicly, uh, he received a Technician of the Year Award from the South Carolina Mosquito Control Association, the annual meeting on November 7th. Congratulations, yeah. As a Technician of the Year, this award recognizes a mosquito control technician who exhibits excellent performance with efforts above and beyond expected duties, maintains the knowledge of mosquito biology, demonstrates enthusiasm and pride in work, and is an asset to the team and community. Uh, he was nominated by the Deputy Director, Tyler Gault. Uh, he's nominated one because mosquito-controlled technicians are required to perform a wide range of duties, um, including but not limited to storm drain treatments, service requests, setting and retrieving traps, larva sighting, and ground ULV spraying. And uh, he has a thorough understanding of all these duties and pays exceptional attention to detail on all aspects. Regardless, uh, he maintains a meticulous and fastidious work ethic that ensures consistently accurate data, which of course is the backbone of any mosquito control program. Uh, he takes exceptional pride in his work as a mosquito control technician and exhibits a high level of professionalism and dedication that any supervisor would be proud of. He routinely receives a high rate of positive reviews and was recently recognized by Beaufort County Council as an outstanding employee. So congratulations for that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, subject to any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any other questions for our county administrator? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at our first citizen's comment. No one signed up for uh, discussion of any items on the agenda. Uh, and I don't see anybody jumping up and down to say they wanna discuss something on the agenda, so we will move on to our committee reports. Is there any committee report?
I have some.
Yes, I do.
All right, we're gonna start down the far end, Mr. Reed's.
One, um, with the airports, Ms. Brock, would you please put those slides up? Again, I think you heard about it during our last meeting. Again, I think you heard about it during our last meeting, but there's been tremendous work at our airport, and we have Mr. Rembold and Mr. Perry here with us tonight, and we want to thank them for their efforts. By all means, come on up, but if you can go through this slide here.
Sure, happy to. Thank you, council. It's good to provide this update. First, I want to thank you for allowing us to undertake this really transformational project at the Hilton Head Island Airport. We are, we started back in February with the, the actual physical groundbreaking and have made great progress in under a year. I would estimate the project's probably about 30% complete, so we'll kind of go through some of the slides. Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. Okay, now this never works for me, so we'll see. Might be the night to buy a lottery ticket. It is. All right, so get a lottery ticket tonight. Okay, so just some, some quick things. We, we do an update like this every month, and this gets how we call it the Stakeholder Update. And we send it to a wide variety of folks, including the airlines and, and a lot of people, chambers of commerce and things like that. But we also do a weekly update on the platform that Hannah's put together, that Engagement HQ. So if you're following that, you can subscribe or follow the airport project and get those weekly updates. So we always have new photos of the progress and things like that on Engagement HQ. So it's just a few of the things that have happened. We'll get to the pictures so I can show you what's really going on. That's a picture from the, the air side, so that's looking from about the taxiway in. And you see on the left side, that's the, the new portion of the building that's going up. All of that structural steel is, I'd say we're about 98% complete on that. There's a little bit on the far side to be done, but since we took that photo, there's now roof decking going on, so it's, it's really being transformed rather quickly. This is a concrete pore for the mezzanine level, so it's kind of interesting how you get concrete up to the second floor. You have to pump it up there. Some more photos of the, the steelworkers doing their job and just putting together some of the different parts. It's like a giant erector set out there, so it's, it's fun to watch that come together from design all the way through construction. And this is, you know, sometimes you have to work overnight. On these pores, you can't have concrete trucks getting stuck in traffic, and not to beat the bridge too badly on 278, but they can't sit, you know, concrete and asphalt needs to get to the job site on time so you don't lose a shipment. So oftentimes, they've got to work throughout the night to make sure they can finish the installation. That's what happened here. These are the traffic lanes that are out front of the terminal. If I, as I've described before, we'll go from having two lanes, two real skinny lanes out front of the building, to having four lanes out front. The first two lanes are open now, and it, it's made a huge difference having that, that big open area out front. This is another view of that new traffic lane, new raised crosswalks that go across for the pedestrians, who have been very, they've adapted very well to the, the project that's going on. And then some demolition in front of the terminal. All of the sidewalks and the front walkways have been taken out, and that's really to make room for some new footers that have to go in for some of the canopies and that. They'll be installed in the front of the terminal. So like they say, you have to break some eggs to make the omelet, and we're kind of breaking the eggs and making the omelet at the same time. And this is just a, kind of the near-term look ahead. This is what's going on, a little more concrete work to do, and then the roof decking goes on and putting in HVAC systems. They're putting the basics in for those, and also have an enormous emergency standby generator that's been installed with the big automatic transfer switch as well. So what that means is when you have storms and things like that, the, the terminal won't shut down. It'll be able to remain 100% operational. So it's been a busy, that's just the last month of what's been going on, but it's really been busy. Contract has been doing a really good job out there, and like I said, we're roughly 30% complete on the project.
John, you say 30%, that's phase one.
Correct.
That's okay, because there are two phases.
That's right.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that one of the best updates on boards and commissions I ever gave? That's, thank you.
Good job.
I was going to say, I thought you were on board and commission, thought it was something else.
All right, that's it. Thank you. Just remember to fly local. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Oh, listen, we, the cat, I understand, is going to be absolutely fine, and Cat Friday is going to be well taken care of. I'm staying close to our good friends at the airport, you know that.
Yes, last week, I attended the Planning Commission meeting on December 2nd, and Ms. Tavernick attended that as well. The Planning Commission constantly amazes me. They're so well-informed and ask such good questions and are on top of everything, and they did an excellent job during a very long meeting on Monday. The Northern Regional Plan, I don't know, Gerald may cover that, that, but they met on November 22nd. We had a meeting. Green Space met on Friday, December 6th. There were six projects reviewed, and then tonight on number 10, Chairman McShane is going to discuss one of the items that came up during that meeting. And then next week, the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board meets and the Stormwater Board meets on December 11th.
Thank you. Ms. Tavernick.
Yes, thank you. So first, I want to thank Sarah and Bradley and Travis drove us around in that big truck, whatever you call it. I don't know, is it a duly, is that what that thing is? I don't really know. But they were very sensitive to us that it had a lift, so short people didn't have to hop up into the bed. And we drove the parade, and it was fun. We played Felice Navidad 32 times, and Travis and Bradley thought that was fine. I went to the school district teacher forum at the Penn Center. They had a breakfast for legislators and leaders, and I wondered why they invited me, but okay. It was, I was part of a three-member panel. Teachers that were there and principals submitted questions. They asked questions on affordable housing, the impact on teachers given their base salary, economic development, and teacher retention and pay. It was well-attended, it was a very nice event. I went to the Soloco Regional Board meeting, and we saw a presentation about the TCL Workforce Training Center. He updated us on funding initiatives. As Ms. Howard said, I was at the Planning Commission, who, that was a three-hour meeting, and they did a great job. They asked great questions, so I want to commend that group. And I want to thank Sarah and Brenna and everybody else that participated in our Boards and Commissions Holiday Drop-In Event. And they bought us these little ornaments. Those of you that weren't there, you've got your ornament with some sentimental little thing on it. I didn't write yours, so I don't know what it is. But anyway, it was really nice, and it was well-attended to thank our volunteers, so appreciate all the work Sarah and Brenna did on it.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Mr. Dawson or Lawson?
Lawson first. We save the best for last, Mr. Lawson.
Go on last.
Oh, you have something as well.
From the Finance Administration and Economic Development Committee that we had in November, and if you weren't there, I'm sorry you weren't because it was three hours long. So we have lots of things coming out of that, and such as, we have added June, June 13th as a national holiday for our staff. We are accepting a donation of a live oak tree at Whitehall Park from the Friends of Whitehall Park. We are extending the broadband everywhere, $170,000 to be used from ARPA funds for broadband assistance. Approval or resolution authorizing the county administrator to accept operational grant award from the Coastal Community Foundation Beaufort Fund Grant Program. Resolution to establish the Beaufort County Local Accommodations Tax and Local Hostile Tax for fiscal year '25. Approval for Beaufort County to enter in a special source revenue credit agreement with Project Micro. Land purchased by Project Micro into an existing multi-county industrial park, Project Micro. And another broadband expansion to serve underserved areas of Beaufort County for $367,000. And approval to authorize the county administrator to accept a federal sub-award grant for the South County Department of Public Health for $23,000. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Mr. Dawson.
I'm going to yield to Alice and ask Alice to give the report on the Northern Regional Plan.
Well, we, yes, we met in, on the 22nd, and we talked about future meetings and subject matters for those meetings, and we heard some other information that was, it's been November 22nd, it's been a while. I'm trying to remember what all we talked about. The main thing was we approved subjects for, for next year, so. And, oh, we, more important, we elected the new chairman, and Ed Pappas, it's not going to be chairman, but Mr. Tommy, Mike Tompkins, is going to be chairman, and Wendy Zera is going to be vice chairman.
Thank you.
For next year?
For next year, starting in January, right.
Okay, Ms. Brown?
I sit on the Board of Southern Carolina Alliance. It's an alliance of seven different counties. Danny Black and his team do an incredible job in economic development. And on November 14th, 2024, North Point Development, in partnership with the Cross Harbor Capital Partners, celebrated the groundbreaking on an 880-acre economic development site in Hardyville that will accommodate up to 6 million square feet of warehouse and industrial space. Phase one of the project represents 200 million in capital investment and will generate more than 550 jobs at full build-out. Senator Margie Bright Matthews and Tom Davis were in attendance, breaking ground with their shovels.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, now we are going to move on to the public hearings and action. I would ask a member of council to make a motion and second to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Make that motion.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Cunningham makes the second duly motion and seconded. Any discussion?
I discuss items 20, 24, and 26. Anyone else?
Items, which one?
Just 1.387 million dollars a hangar.
That was done in my committee. That is actually done through a grant.
A grant? That's not county money?
It's us accepting a grant for that funding for that.
Oh, okay, all right, good, all right.
Number 20.
24.
24.
The 278 corridor study, what is that? Is that the bridge?
No, it is not.
What is it?
It's through LATS. It's the entire study of the corridor from Exit 8 all the way to.
Seapine Circle.
Seapine Circle.
I thought we already did that.
No.
We discussed doing it, it's never been done. The last study that Hilton Head funded themselves was from the bridge, or from Moss Creek to the Seapine Circle. And that was a study done by then. This one is associated with LATS, is also came in that same committee that we had a couple weeks ago together.
And number 26, is that the whole 170 from.
Yes.
Smalls Parkway all the way down to.
That's LATS as well.
LATS as well, basically the triangle project.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 10, I would need a motion and second for the discussion of the results of the third-party review of the Mitchellville Appraisals authorized by the Community Services and Land Use Committee on September 9th, 2024, related to the purchase of the Mitchellville property by Town of Hilton Head.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
It was seconded by Mrs. Reeds, and Ms. Howard made the motion. Duly motioned and seconded, and we are now ready for discussion, and I will ask the Chair of the Green Space Committee to address council.
Good evening, council. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm Mike McShane, a resident of Charleston County, but have the privilege of serving as your Green Space Chairman, and I bring greetings from all your colleagues in Charleston County. We had, on Friday, as reported, we had a Green Space Committee meeting, and we received a report on a third-party review of the appraisal. As you may recall, in September, you gave authority to Green Space to do a third-party review. It was based on an appraisal we had done under the process and one that had been done prior to even the ordinance being completed, and there was a differential between the two appraisals. As you also may recall, that Judge Dukes had oversight over the whole process of the contract negotiation on the Mitchellville track. The original appraisal that was done, it was done really to expedite, to, to see if there was reality in collaborating, negotiating with the family. And then we did, just for our normal due diligence with your authority, we did our appraisal process here, and that did show a significant delta. And so in collaboration with your colleagues at the Town of Hilton Head, we requested this, the authorization to do a third-party review. Third-party review report showed that there were some technical issues, frankly, on both appraisals that was, that were both reviewed, and enough to show, for instance, where some of the comps were used in the first appraisal versus the second appraisal. And with the time differential, it made sense in discussion that we come back and seek approval to go ahead and complete this, a, what I will call a third part, a third appraisal. I think this sets a high benchmark, so this is not a standard that we're going to come back to on a regular basis. One, the transaction value itself, and that we saw that there was enough technical issues between both appraisals that we think we'd have the defense to do this again. We will not seek additional dollars because you already gave the authority to spend up to 10,000, and that will cover the cost of doing so. So the review, the, the third-party review, and therefore the third appraisal will be inclusive in those, in those numbers to do so. We made it clear to your colleagues at the town that by doing so, you run a risk that a third appraisal could actually even come in lower, that they need to understand that, that they accept that that risk is there. Certainly, when that comes in, we'll provide that information directly to everybody on council through the Community Services Committee as well, so you can see that. If it were to come in higher than the, than the appraisal the Green Space did versus the other one, again, that'd be, come with some recommendations to the council on how to maybe manage that.
Are there any questions before I ask for a specific motion?
I'd just like to make a comment, and it, the chairman made it very clear to everyone there that this will not be the standard to go for another appraisal. This was a highly unusual situation, and that local governments need to use third parties to, before they start getting appraisals. I shouldn't say appraisals. Negotiations should not be done on such, such things as, as these properties. It needs to be worked through before the appraisals are done.
May I comment on that, Mr. Chairman? I've seen this in experience in my different roles, whether it was chairman of DNR, chairman of the state bank, that when a government knocks on a door, it doesn't necessarily put yourself in the best position to negotiate. What we were trying to set as a standard is to have some collaboration. There are ways that the state has found very effective, particularly in conservation negotiations, to use some of our nonprofit partners in collaboration to do the negotiation, and then you can assign the option or design the contract to the governmental entity in the case of whether it be the town or a county. I think there's been experiences this council's even had in the past on the county trying to acquire properties that hasn't necessarily brought the best value at times that could be there. And because you've got a limited resource in your Green Space dollars, we're really, are pushing the ability to leverage those dollars as best we can. So the recommendation to your, to your colleagues at the municipalities, and this is at the request of the chairman and the vice chairman, was to encourage them to collaborate with Green Space or Green Space Resources to help identify certain tracks that they have an interest in, and let us work a way that we can help them get the best bang for the buck.
Any other, Mr. Cunningham?
So I know whenever the county's purchasing property, we're not allowed to pay over appraisal. Does the same thing work in the Green Space Committee?
That has certainly been our recommendation to you as council, that that's a policy that we adopted as a committee, part of the recommendation. Council certainly has the ability to do what you want to do. The state follows the same protocol on that, and we did not offer a grant over the second appraisal.
Originally, right. So my question is, if this one comes below, who's going to pick up the rest of the bill?
Well, that's a risk that I put on the Town of Hilton Head to understand that that is a possibility, and that we'll have, and we would bring a recommendation to council on how to handle either way, whether the appraisal comes in and demonstrates it's below, or if the appraisal comes back and demonstrates there's some attitude to that.
Okay, any other questions?
Any more questions?
Yes.
So Ms. Howard said we would want to encourage entities not to purchase before it goes through the correct appraisal and so on. How do you get that word out? Because what happens if somebody else comes and says, well, I already bought this property for 14 million, you know? Let's say Bluffton, I bought it for 14 million, and the appraisal's only 9 million, now we're back in the rung. That's why I worry about setting a precedent?
Yes, sir.
But how do we let everybody else know, you should not walk down that road?
So with permission, with permission to your chairman, he helped co-host the meeting with your municipalities in this very room, and we made it very clear. What I did hear was inconsistent messaging from some of your colleagues saying, we didn't know this. Or others said, well, we knew this, so we're going to move forward on that. So we made it very clear, everybody's in the room. So we made it very clear, everybody's in the room, everybody's going to hear this. And I subscribe to the old adage, we'll tell them what we told them, excuse me, we're going to tell them what we tell them, we tell them, and then we told, we told them what we told them. So they've heard it at least three different times. We've made that very clear in the process. And so through your staff's diligence, when an application goes in, that's one of the first things that they're going to look for to see that. Because if it's really kind of a, excuse the expression, a dumb deal, we're going to let them know that upfront. Will it, will it happen again?
I'm sure.
Very well could. We'll try to minimize the chance that that continues to happen. I can't, I cannot encourage these municipalities to understand, this is a program that the county has brought to them to benefit their quality of life for their communities, and to work with the county resources to help get the best value going forward.
How many more properties do we have in the queue that people have requested?
We approved six to come to the January, because as you recall, we got to come to get the first due diligence work. So there were six that were enough interest to bring forward in January. I wish I could control the length of time appraisals, et cetera, take. Right now, we're looking at sixty, ninety days, something like that is what's going on. I did in my own personal life, I recently did a transaction, and I was frustrated with the fact that it took about a hundred days to get an appraisal done. Real estate, of course, is time is of the essence. We understand that. I also recognize that I'm seeing at our meeting, as an example, on Friday, there were half a dozen guests in the meeting, and I realized they're all realtors, looking for, to kind of learn about the program, because I could see in their mind all of a sudden that, oh, well, I've got clients that have properties and want to make the direct application to, through Greenspace. And so part of our scoring is the collaboration you work in terms of who you bring with you to the application, because that's a way to prevent all of a sudden this county being stuck with funding only projects that certain people would benefit from. That's why there's, I think to your, you've set a standard that really is so high. It's the first county to do this, and now with the process that you've approved, it's really set a standard that's going to make it challenging for someone not to have had the ability to work collaboratively, either directly with your staff or a conservation organization that frankly is going to help bring the best value to it. Who also has access to other funding that sort of is the check valve of this is a good project.
Okay, good to know.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, since Mr. Tim asked the question, the six candidates that you have coming before us in June, I mean, January, are we adhering to the large softer said, we want to make sure it's north of the broad, south of the broad?
Great question. We're talking about in the state statute about the equality of how you distribute the funds. And what we, and through counsel, our recommendation, which you adopted, was talk about equity. Because the reality is values in the southern part of the county are very different than northern part of the county. With that being said, we're doing, yes, we are doing, in fact, we very well, because of a great project like Mitchellville, and don't get me wrong, it was a great project to do, but it consumed a great portion of the funds in that area. So we're very cognizant of that. So you will hear a recommendation potentially coming forward that may come out of, out of a certain region that we, our recommendation may be is to not fund, to not go forward on that project. And that could be because it's not merited to go forward because of the project itself, or frankly, it will, it will skew that section so badly that then we're going to be a negative to every other region within the county.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Building off that, that was the first time I think I've heard anybody mention equity with the program. I thought it was divided into four quadrants with twenty-five million each. I don't remember hearing anything about an equitable, like being a larger portion going to Hilton Head versus Ladies Island, St. Helena.
When we brought the recommendation of the program to counsel that you adopted, that was a big part of the discussion. Because otherwise, we could have just simply said, we'll send twenty-five million dollars to each section and be done with it. But the reality really was that to do that is, is being unfair to each one, because they all have their different pressure points.
Do you have, do you know the allocation? I'm not going to hold you to it right now, but can you send us something with the, what's been spent? Kind of the accounting of what's available right now and what y'all plan for each area?
Yeah, in terms of ones that have closed?
Well, I mean, just what's closed and how much is remaining, because I, I thought we were all getting twenty-five million for the quadrants.
I think it's a pretty simple answer, what's been spent, because the only two projects checked are Mitchellville and Gregory Knack. The only two. So that's out of the hundred million, that's about eleven, eleven million, eleven million, right there.
You have to take this out of county expenses too, and that's the equitable.
Any further discussion? All right, I'm going to ask a member of council to make a motion and a second as follows. Move that the county authorize a third appraisal for the property known as Mitchellville on Hilton Head Island with the following conditions. One, Hilton Head Island must agree in writing that the valuation price that comes in from the third appraisal is the price to be used to determine the amount the county shall contribute toward the purchase of the Mitchellville property from the Greenspace program. Two, the county shall select the appraisal for the appraiser for this third appraisal. Three, the county shall not contribute any additional amount toward the purchase of Mitchellville other than the value in this third appraisal. And finally, once this process is done, it will be remanded to the Community Services Land Use Committee to bring a recommendation to counsel regarding the third appraisal. A motion, please. So moved. Mr. Reitz makes that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Howard makes the second duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? See? Yes, sir?
If the appraisal, if the third appraisal comes in higher than the two appraisals we already have, you're saying that the county is going to pay for that appraisal? Is that what this motion is saying?
Pay the difference.
They're going to, they're going to pay what the appraised value is.
We would bring that as, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we would bring that as a recommendation, what, if in fact that were to occur, what we would recommend that be.
Okay. Okay. Any others?
Just for clarity, it is being purchased for over appraisal, correct?
No.
No, no, no.
Hilton Head purchased it over.
We, we purchased it for what was the appraised value. They
So it has been, exactly. So it has been purchased over appraisal value already.
Correct.
And we're just not paying Hilton Head back for the amount that they did it. We're doing it based on the value of the actual appraisal.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? So this will be moved forward without objection. Is there any objection? Seeing none, this is approved, and we move on to item number eleven.
Mr. Chairman, may I just offer one?
Yep.
Thank you for your indulgence. I offer this for counsel to think about. Had the town not offered the value which they then paid, we wouldn't even be having this conversation, the way Judge Duke set it up. There were other offers that were higher than the appraised value that we got, but that was how they got it. They offered that amount. To their credit, they understood that then to do that. I point that out. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I offer, Mr. Moore, thank you, and just as a family with two nephews who are currently deployed, both academy grads, right now, I offer four words for you. Go Navy, beat Army.
All right. Item number eleven is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance appropriating the funds from the state A tax funds as recommended by the state A tax committee in compliance with the requirements of the South Carolina Code of Laws. May I have such a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Tabernak makes the motion. Mr. Lawson jumped in to make the second duly motioned and seconded, and I will turn to the public. For the public hearing portion, is there anyone who wishes to comment about this item at this time? Seeing the blank stares, I guess you don't, and we will move on. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments from members of counsel? Seeing none, this will be approved on third reading without objection, and I see no objections. Item twelve is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance amending the Budget Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five to reflect the approval of the use of general fund fund balance in the amount of three million, three hundred thousand dollars for fleet services, vehicle, and equipment purchases. A motion. So moved. Mr. Dawson.
I'll make the second on that.
Mr. Lawson duly motioned and seconded. Again, I will turn to the public for weighing in on this item. Seeing no public, we will close the public portion. Any comments from counsel?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am?
So this was, just for the public, this was originally in our discussion for budget, the fleet services. And that was when our CFO was leaving and things fell apart. So this is not us trying to sneak in a three million dollar budget item. But I do have a question. It says that there's nine hundred thirty-three thousand eighty-six dollars in the facilities management capital equipment line. Is that money going toward this? And so removed from their capital equipment line because this will replace it? That's almost a hundred thousand dollars.
No.
No, a million dollars, sorry.
No, it's not.
Why?
That was an, that was an opportunity. If you, if you did not agree to the full three point three million dollars, that was an opportunity for us to defer some facilities purchases and use those funds in, in place of that.
But are those funds in the facilities management capital equipment line?
Yes, they are.
So what are they going to be used for if we're doing fleet?
Their initial intended purpose was for equipment needed for Public Works, for the Public Works Department.
That is not on this list on page twenty-eight? I mean, we have a whole list of, I don't know, thirty-something items, thirty-six.
Yes, because they're, they're, they are, they were originally included in the budget. Those were budgeted items, and they are not part of the facility, they're not part of that three point three million dollars. They were already existing funds in the budget that the facilities department was willing to defer the purchase of those equipment so that we could buy the capital or the assets we needed for vehicles. So we don't have to do that. They'll still be able to purchase the fleet vehicles as was originally budgeted.
So if we go to page twenty-eight, I just want the public to know the list of vehicles is here.
Yes.
And I'm kind of stunned some of them are so old.
Some of the vehicles that we're replacing. Yes, they are.
So it's not like we're replacing two-year-old vehicles, and some of these have hundred and five thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand, hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So I just encourage the public, if they're concerned, here's an ambulance, two thousand and sixteen Ram, two hundred and thirty-three thousand miles on it.
Yes, ma'am.
So if public is concerned that we're dropping vehicles like every two years, they have a new one, which I don't even do myself. It's really all listed here what the vehicles are, and some have extensive mileage. I was, I saw there's a passenger van for DSN, a new fleet addition. They have quite a few vehicles. Why would they need another van?
They do. That, there is, it's likely the one you're looking at is a Lyft van, so it's got a
It's sixty thousand. It's not for a Lyft van, is it? Sixty grand?
Sure. I'd have to look at the, at that, in detail, the one that's there, but it does describe exactly what that Lyft van is for.
Yeah, but I do encourage the public to look at the list so they can see we, we have some really
If I remember correctly, there was twenty-nine vehicles, twenty on, on the list in general.
There's thirty-six actually on this first list on page twenty-eight. And then you have ones leased, and you decided lease was not a good way to go, which I would agree. So the information's all here. I'm just saying the public who questioned why we do it, it's right here.
Any other comments? Seeing no other comments, this will be approved for second reading without objection, and I see no objections. Item number thirteen is the first reading of an ordinance amending the Community Development Code, Section A dot six dot four zero to allow lodging short-term housing rentals in the Dale Community Preservation District, and Section A dot seven dot four zero to allow lodging short-term housing rental in the Dale Mixed Use District. May I have the second? A motion first and second, and then I will recognize why you're going to recuse.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Howard makes the motion.
And then I have the details.
I'll second.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Cunningham makes the second, and Mr. Dawson is going to recuse himself because the individual that we're talking about who made this, his name is Dawson, and although Mr. Dawson is not related to Mr. Dawson, someone might get that impression of our Mr. Dawson.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to turn to Ms. Howard.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the request for the tax amendment for the following reasons. It is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. It is not in conflict with any provision of this Development Code or the Code of Ordinances. It is required by changed conditions. It does address a demonstrated community need. It is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zones in this Development Code, or would improve the compatibility among uses and ensure efficient development within the county. It would result in a logical and orderly development pattern, and it would not result in adverse impacts on the natural environment, including but not limited to water, air, noise, stormwater management, wildlife, vegetation, wetlands, and the natural functioning of the environment.
We will need a second for that.
I thought somebody seconded it already.
No, that was, that was just to get to the point where she could give the reasons why we want to do this, so we need a second for the reasons. So Mr. Glover does that. Is there any discussion about the reasons?
Well, I want to just ask a clarifying question. This was brought by one resident, correct? Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that. One person requested this, and I also watched the Planning Commission. They voted to deny five to three.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, they did.
They did.
I watched.
I have one more question if I can, Mr. Chairman. I think the last time we talked about this, we asked the question of Councilman Dawson, did he get feedback from his people, his, the constituents? And what was that answer? Does anybody remember that or have that?
I don't think we asked him because he had to recuse himself.
Yeah.
Well, I thought we were going to leave this and find out from him, so, you know, again, I think we should hear from the people that reside there.
The, the area and surrounding
We had no objections. No one came to the meeting to object.
Chuck, can I?
Yeah, good evening. Thank you very much. So when we have a tax, tax amendment that comes in from a member of the public, it goes to the Planning Commission, it's posted, it's advertised. The meeting, you know, everybody around that area, just like everybody throughout the county, has invitation to those meetings, and we have public hearings there at the committee and at council. What this is, this is not authorizing a short-term rental. And this was the discussion that we had at the Land Use Committee. It's not authorizing a short-term rental. What this does as a special use is it authorizes the application for a short-term rental in that area, like we do throughout the rest of the county, which opens up the special use process. You have to post the, you have to post the property, letters are sent to the nearby neighbors, and then it goes back through the ZBOA, and the ZBOA makes the determination up or down as to whether that particular site in that area. But right now, they can't even make an application for it. So the reason they went back and forth with the Planning Commission, if you listened to it, is there are some varying opinions on whether we should or should not have short-term rentals countywide, right? So it's a much broader discussion that could be had on short-term rentals. But we're not approving anyone to do a short-term rental. We're just giving them the opportunity to apply for it and be considered in this area.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Glover?
Yes. Let me make sure I understand. One of the things I do know that is that Mr. Dawson did have a public meeting on yesterday, and if there was any opposition or objection, they would have been expressed at that time, and they would have been here. I'm just assuming that. Now, I wasn't there, so I don't know whether this ever came up or not. But my assumption is that the gentleman that's applying for is that the gentleman that's applying for, for, for this short-term rental is also looking at opportunity for himself and his family to benefit from a house that's, that he owns in the Dale community through Airbnb, so short-term rentals. And, and this will give that community an opportunity to take homes that are there and use it as an asset. And that's the, that's my assumption, and I think I support that in rural communities as, as well as in inner cities, because there are a lot of families with second homes or family homes that they don't have to sell if they can actually use it as an asset moving forward. So I'm going to support the motion that's on the floor because that's what I think is happening here. But if that's not the case, I think the citizens in Dale or in that community would be in here letting us know if they objected this.
Yes, sir, I think you're spot on, and I will point out the staff has made a recommendation to approve it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just one clarity, because I don't know the area that well. It was stated by Ms. Howard that this fits the location. Does it? I don't know the zoning, I don't know anything like that specifically in this area, so does it fit the outlook that they're looking for in the Dale community?
So if you go across the Whale Branch Bridge, I don't know if you're familiar with that area, it's a relatively rural area that matches the same types of layouts, same distribution of homes as we have in other rural areas of the county.
And then I would just like to make one statement saying I do agree with Mr. Glover. I'm all for people to be able to use their property however they see fit, as long as it fits in the code, but I also would, wouldn't encourage members of the community and county council to realize that anytime you do that, you are, if people aren't selling homes and they're holding on to homes, you're actually raising property values. So that does raise your cost of living when you do allow this type of Airbnb because of more values associated with that home. So it is a catch-22 when you allow it. That's why I know a lot of HOAs don't allow it in their neighborhoods, but places that don't have HOAs, you know, that's where the county gets involved. So it is a catch-22.
Any other discussion? First action will be to approve the, with seven items, correct?
Yes, let's see, seven.
Yes. The first action will be the approval of those seven items.
I have a first, but I didn't have a second.
That was, Ms. Howard made the first and Mr. Glover made the second on that. So is there any further discussion about that? Seeing none, the seven items will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Second action will be for us to adopt the first reading with those seven items as part of the first reading going forward. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, that will be approved without objection, and that takes care of item number thirteen. Item number fourteen is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute any and all necessary documents for acceptance of the right-of-way or temporary construction easements on real property associated with the Stewart Point Road sidewalk project. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, Dawson.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dawson made the motion, Mr. Glover made the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number fifteen is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the county administrator enter into, enter into a lease agreement with the Mitchellville Preservation Project, Inc., for Suite one thirty-four and Suite one forty-two of the county-owned office building located at five thirty-nine William Hilton Parkway on Hilton Head Island. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Reeds made the motion. And Ms. Brown made the second duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
I had a question. It's been over, it's been about a year ago, went to that building, and I understand their need for more space, but if I understand correctly, the treasure is no longer occupying that building?
Correct. That's correct.
And is the auditor still in that building?
No.
Neither? So there's a lot of space there.
Yes.
I think that question was proposed by Mr. Bartholomew to ask them if they want to keep those offices or if we can free it up as well. I believe that was in the public facilities committee.
But there's, the judge is still there.
Yes, Judge.
Heather Gavin.
Heather's still there. Probate.
Okay, any other discussion? This will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item sixteen is a first reading of an ordinance to invest four point three million from the general fund, fund balance in infrastructure development project at the Buford Executive Airport to fund the construction of airport hangars.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Bartholomew made the first and second discussion. Any discussion?
I have something, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I went back to our budget book and I looked at enterprise fund, the explanation of what it is, because some residents have said, why would we fund hangars for rich people to park an airplane? An enterprise fund, according to our budget, says it's an account for business-type activities of the government whereby goods and services are provided to customers external to the government, where the activity is often financed with debt that is secured solely from the revenues of the activity or where the user fees and charges are sufficient to cover the costs of those goods and services, including related capital costs and debt service. That is, the activity is self-supporting. With that definition in mind, why would we use fund balance outright and why would we incur any, any responsibility on the general public? This is an enterprise fund and it should be self-supporting. That's my thought.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham. Well, first of all, does anyone from administration wish to address her concerns?
I really think that's a good question, Tab.
What?
I think that's a good question.
I'm just quoting what was in the budget book.
Right, as, as we discussed, Councilman Tabernick, some of the items that they are concerning to the airport, and the reason that we came with this project, with the benefit of building additional hangars at the airport, number one, helps take care of the extensive waiting list of folks who are looking for hangars at the airport, which means more aircraft that want to be based in Buford County and therefore would pay personal property taxes in Buford County could then be based in Buford County. A lot of those aircraft are currently in other counties, or in Colton County, Hampton County, Jasper County, so those counties are benefiting from the personal property taxes that are levied on those aircraft. So we would then, as a county, benefit from those taxes. The airport would benefit from the activity that comes from those aircraft, which are those rates, charges, fees that you spoke about. So that would increase, you know, sales of fuel and things like that, and activity at the airport tends to breed more activity at the airport, so that would increase the business. I agree with you that ideally, the enterprise fund would be self-sufficient, but if you track back over, you know, the last ten years or so, as we put in the, in the packet for this project, the contribution of personal property tax money for those aircraft that have been made from that, from Buford Executive Airport is in the ballpark of, I think, two and a half million dollars. Maybe it was more than that. I've got it in the package here. About two and a half million dollars, we estimate, over the last ten years, but never, as, as far as we know in the history of that airport, has any of that tax revenue been invested back into the airport. So the revenue generated at the airport was then put into the general fund, not to the benefit of the airport. So we're simply asking that some of that gets reinvested into the airport to grow more of that tax revenue through the airport.
John, and if you could, you're not solely, even though maybe set up as an enterprise fund, you still have county operations out of there that you have to pay for. I believe you'd mentioned sheriff's departments out of there, taking up facilities that, I mean, necessary.
Correct, right, and.
Civil patrol, so there's some other things, civil air patrol.
Right.
That, that y'all don't make any money from, but are necessary to serve the community. So is that?
Right, and we're, we're happy to have them. We have mosquito control out there, public health asset. We, we recognize one of their employees today, and certainly this place wouldn't be nearly as pleasurable to sit on our porches and docks without mosquito control. But we provide that land to mosquito control at, at no cost, so they do not pay a ground lease for that, and that's an authorized use, so they, they can, they can do that. The sheriff's offices out there, again, happy to have them out there. It's great to have the presence, but they don't pay for the office space, and they're also taking up the land on Highway twenty-one that would otherwise be, you know, leasable property that us as an enterprise fund would be able to benefit from financially, but we don't have that opportunity. Then, of course, civil air patrol, they don't take up a lot of space, and again, we're happy to have them there as well because they provide, you know, informational resources and aerial reconnaissance after storm events and things like that, and we do tie down their aircraft out there at, at no charge to the civil air patrol and, and provide for education of the, the members of the squadron.
And, Mr. Chairman, and John, have you, if you can go back and check, it's okay if you don't know, but has the county ever given any direct allocation for the general fund to support the airport?
I believe when the first set of hangars was built, there was some investment from the county in that as well, because that, that airport is, as with most county-owned general aviation airports, operates right on the line of, of profit-loss.
And the, the last thing that I'll ask, someone mentioned to me that the waiting list is so long because we have cheap hangars. Are, are we in comparable market rates for the other areas?
We are, and it, it's difficult to look at that because the, there's a wide variety of, of airports in this region of the state. So even if you go a couple hours inland, the rates for those hangars are going to be significantly lower than the rates for our hangars on the coast. We're simply a more desirable airport to be at for many reasons. Now, some of our old, our hangars at ARW, the Buford Executive, are a little bit older, but they still rent for three sixty-two a month, which is not inexpensive, but it's not crazy expensive either. But we are in line with other airports, so we routinely measure ourselves against other airports who are like ours, like, you know, Georgetown, some of the other general aviation airports up and down the coast. So we do, all of the, the airports in the state trade that information back and forth freely so that we can make sure that we're, you know, in line with each other, especially when a project like this comes up. These will be brand-new hangars, so we would anticipate those, those monthly rental rates would be a little bit higher on these because they'll be brand-new and, and beautiful hangars with, I should mention, probably a hundred percent occupancy when we open them.
Thank you.
So to Mr. Bartholomew's question, did we not lend the airport an unstructured loan for seven hundred, twelve thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars? It is unstructured, which we've been hit with the audit, Mr. Robinson has told us. That is unstructured, that was money out of the general fund account? So yes, we have.
I believe that's a loan, though.
It's a loan that's not been paid and it's not structured, so.
It was, so I, I don't know what the original amount of that loan was.
Yep.
However, that is the balance of the loan, that the airport is responsible to continue paying back. So while it's an unstructured loan, the airport does make payments towards that, towards that loan.
Ten thousand dollars this year so far.
Yes, ma'am.
They'll be paying it in perpetuity.
Likely. One of the opportunities that we have here is to invest in the enterprise fund to make it more profitable so that the airport can have a reasonable return on the investment and pay back those unstructured, that unstructured loan at a much higher rate, as well as in, in the report that John presented at, during committee, was some options for counsel. Part of that is, is a loan from general fund, part of that is a grant from general fund, and the investment there would allow the airport to generate some, some more revenue to invest in itself and pay back its loans to the county.
The, the airports are supposed to operate as enterprise funds, which is totally independent of the general fund budget. And over the years, the, the general fund has been supporting the enterprise funds of the airport. So my question is, at what point in the future do we see the airport's enterprise funds become independent of our general fund budget?
Well, that is a great question, and I appreciate that, and it's a, it's a very reasonable question. I would say that, I can't tell you what year that will be, but I will tell you that a project like this is that type of shot in the arm that an airport like Buford Executive Airport needs in order to grow. Because with the ability to rent those hangars and generate the business, the revenue that will come from the additional aircraft out there and the additional activity at the airport, we can execute projects that have been deferred for over a decade. Some of those are FAA projects that they need to see happen. So we, we are not able to use that airfield as efficiently as it could be used. For example, we do not have a full parallel taxiway on that runway. That may not mean much to people who aren't pilots and, and aircraft or airport safety folks, but what that means is you have aircraft that have to back taxi, they taxi down the runway before taking off, and they turn around at the end of the runway before they take off. Keep in mind, Buford Executive Airport is an uncontrolled airport. That simply means we do not have, have an aircraft control tower, where air traffic control tower, where those aircraft speak to a tower to get clearance. They speak to each other on the radios and they, you know, speak to the air station to get a release from the airport, but most general aviation airports operate that way. So to have a lack of a full parallel taxiway is an issue for safety and efficiency. So one of the projects that we'd like to execute from the revenues we would generate by the additional activity provided by hangars and additional aircraft on the airport would be that parallel taxiway that would get us most of the way to the end of the runway and significantly improve our safety posture. So we're trying to balance operations, business, and safety at the airport.
Mr. Glover.
Yeah, I, I'm parallel with, with Mr. Dawson to ask about the financial side of things. It, it seems to me that, you know, I, I want to support you because I've been asking for hangars out there for, for years because I see it as a means of operating growth, et cetera, et cetera. But in your presentation, you, you really don't show how financially, you give indicators and stuff that can happen, but, you know, it seemed to me that you would just give some type of projection of what revenue you expect even from the sale of fuel, et cetera, the rent for it, and then the question I would ask is what Mr. Bartholomew asked, are we charging sufficiently for those hangars for rental?
Well, that's something that, it's a good question, and we always look at that, we evaluate the rates every couple of years. So we may do it, a full-scale study of even the old hangars and take a look at whether those should be increased. I can't tell you what that'll result in. It is hard to, to come to you with a number and say, this is how much fuel twenty-five more aircraft are going to buy. We can't predict that. That, that's based on way too many market-driven items. I can't tell you exactly how much personal property tax revenue is going to be generated by the folks who decide to base their aircraft here. These are going to be predominantly T-hangers, there'll be a couple of box hangars, that's just a difference in size of aircraft that can go in there. T-hangers are your smaller aircraft, but those aircraft can range from forty thousand dollars in value to over a million, too, in value. So there is a, a wide variation in the amount of personal property taxes that could be, you know.
But you, you have a list and you have space that you're providing, you got a number out there that, that's waiting to get in those space, so you got the rent there, but while they're there, you got, I guess, do you, are you telling me that you got a hundred, and I'm using a number, a hundred V aircraft now just waiting to come in? But they're buying fuel from you already, so you're not going to increase that. The only thing you can increase now would be from the rent space. Is that what you're saying? Or you're saying that you would probably get more aircraft there once you get the hangars up and they're going to be buying you fuel? You got new aircraft now buying fuel?
I would say a little bit of both of that. So we will have some folks who are currently tied down on the apron who would want to move into a hangar, so they would have that.
But they're buying you fuel now anyway, so all you're doing is selling them rent space.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's probably not all of the hangar spaces, though. We, we would have new aircraft come in. And then one of the, the miseries of, of the airport business is you don't know who flies over you and doesn't tell you that we're not stopping at your place. You don't have enough, we, we routinely, just last week, we had to move airplanes around so that we could get other airplanes in the, on the apron. We get very busy out there, we don't have the space. So if we can take some more aircraft off the apron and put them into hangars, we can park a few more of those, the charter. a few more of those, the charter airplanes who are coming in to deliver folks to your town to spend their money in your town. These are people who come into town to spend large amounts of money and benefit the small businesses in this town. These are not just hobbyist aircraft owners. These are people who are coming to visit this place. These are the business people who are coming to conduct business, to do the developments, to come and meet with you folks about some of the projects they want to develop.
I mean, you're a good salesman. The only problem is you don't have to put it out on paper so I can see.
You gotta trust me on this one. Not all this works on paper. You can't always predict everything 100%.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
I'd like to have some more information. I can't, I know you can't put it all on paper and the other question I have is why is it 30 years? Why couldn't it be 15 years for the payback? But the big question, you have to know the average size of your aircraft that's there now and we know it's not going to be exact on paper, but I don't feel like we have enough information to make a decision tonight and I'm going to vote against it tonight.
Well, you're not going to get the information if you vote against it.
Well, that's true. I could vote for it tonight if we get more information.
Right, see, this is the first reading. Option two is something that we're going to explore, as you just said before, you stole my thunder, was, okay, we haven't decided the payback period and the interest rate.
I feel good with voting.
What we're doing is we're setting it up to tell them, look, we're approving the first reading, we like the idea, but we do eventually want this to be self-sufficient. And the only way we're going to do that is to know some facts and figures. Aircraft, payback period of time, interest rate, those kinds of things. John is not a wizard that he's going to be able to tell us, okay, to the penny, this is it. Okay? It is going to grow the airport, especially if you put the other runway in.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Administrator.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a new, we have an opportunity with a new CFO to go back and look at this and there are a lot of questions from council to provide you all with information. So an option would be, you could go back to committee and we could present that, or we could do first reading and bring it, but my recommendation is maybe it goes back to committee and we can have some more discussion on that.
Then we would have to amend this to send it to the committee, which committee, for what specified period of time?
Was it Finance Committee?
Finance Committee.
This came out of public facilities, I believe. It was finance. Okay, all right. So I will need a motion from a council member to recommend that this be sent back to committee for further review. At that time, the committee will have the conversation in setting up the agenda so that we're not wasting our time, the specificity of what we're looking for needs to be there. Okay, so who's going to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so Ms. Tabernick makes the motion, Mr. Dawson makes the second, that we are going to send this back to the Finance Committee for its next meeting to have additional information to recommend first reading to County Council regarding the expenditure of these funds.
Mr. Chair, we want to, I know the last Finance Committee meeting, we brought it forward, kind of open-ended with option two being supported, but wanting the full body to weigh in on the term and the interest rate. Do we want to have that discussion?
I would think that that's most appropriate at the Finance Committee so that they can prepare. Plan A is 30 years, Plan B is 15, Plan C is 25, whatever, to give some options and understanding. And I know Pinky is a genius at that. Okay, duly motioned and seconded, is there any further discussion about the amendment to this?
I will just object.
Okay? So we will have one objection to sending this back to committee. Is everybody else of the mindset to send this back to committee?
I personally would rather move forward with it, but I'd rather see it go back to committee than die up here tonight.
Same thing.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't think it was going to die. I think we were going to pass first reading with the idea, when it comes to second reading, they know what we were going to do, but we have it to go back to committee now.
I just think we have a habit too much of sending things back and then have the same discussion back up here again and things you drug out like the Hilton Head Bridge did and so on and so on. I think we have a month between this and our next County Council meeting and then a week off, so there's three weeks of work there that we could have gotten a lot of these answers before we went to that. So now we're two months out before we see this again at council. It wouldn't be till February at this rate.
Is there anybody else objecting to?
I'll object as well then, let's.
Yeah, I'm going to object too.
That's three.
I object too.
I'll object too.
That's four. That's five.
Yeah, I'll make six.
Six, okay, so that's defeated.
Sorry.
We're at the first reading and we will do the first reading without objection, but we, you do now know, administration, exactly what we're looking for. When you come to second reading, it is how are we going to finance this? What are the terms? What is the length of time? Any other pertinent information? Because at the second reading, we're also going to have public input. So we want the public to understand exactly what we're going to do.
And Mr. Chair, are we, without objection, moving forward with option two, or are we still leaving it, just leaving it open?
Well, option two is.
The hybrid approach.
Is the hybrid approach. They're going to come back when we have the public hearing and second reading of exactly what it may look like.
Because we can still make major changes on the second vote.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So I'm going to object to this so it's not without objection.
Okay.
I'm going to be Mr. Cunningham.
All right, so, end of discussion?
End of discussion.
Ms. Tabernick is still going to object.
I'm objecting.
Okay, the rest of us will say yes, so this will be approved with one objection. Thank you. Moving on. I would ask for a motion for the approval of the purchase of license plate reading cameras for the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office with ARPA funds in the amount of $262,291.34. Mr. Reeds made the motion and I saw a second over here, Mr. Dawson. Duly motioned and seconded, is there any discussion?
I just want to know where these cameras are going to be.
Training on you, yes, they are. Okay, this will be approved without objection. Okay, this will be approved with one objection and I see no other objections. The motion carries with 10 yes, one of no by Mr. Bartholomew. Number 18 is a motion to approve the 2025 council meeting schedule.
I'll motion.
Ms. Brown, second.
I'll second.
Who was the second?
I was.
Okay, Ms. Howard. Duly motioned and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Right here.
Yeah. As I looked at the calendar, well, first of all, let me thank the committee in my absence for actually adding June 19th as a national holiday to our Beaufort County calendar. But as Tab initiated the calendar for 2025, the chat, the chat that we have on a monthly basis, June 19th is the holiday and the chat is scheduled for that day and I recommend that we change that. Not change the holiday, change the chat.
I'm sure along the way, we'll change the calendar.
Okay.
But duly noted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment. It is commendable to have the chats, but I know many of us have our own separate meetings on a quarterly or even, as Mr. Councilman Dawson has them monthly. So I just hope the public understands that there will still be individual district meetings in many of the districts and that some of us may not be at the chat with council when it's on Hilton Head necessarily. We'll watch it.
We also have to change three dates because of Lowcountry.
And expect you.
I gave him this there.
Nothing against Hilton Head, I'm just saying that we all each have our own.
So it is, you're aware of those date changes as well?
You will be.
So, I would suggest that we do not approve the county meeting schedule because we would then have to re-approve one again. So we'll wait till January, we know when the January, no, that's right, we have to post the meeting schedule. My apologies, it's got to be done here and we'll do it again in January to correct it. Okay, so it's duly motioned and seconded to approve the meeting schedule as wrong as it is and we move on from there. Any other discussion?
It's not really wrong, it just has a couple tweaks.
Yes.
Let's be honest, okay.
Okay, this will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Item 19, I would ask for a motion and second for the appointment of Patrick Mitchell to the Stormwater Management Utility Board for a four-year term with an expiration date of November 2028. And council should be aware that this person has been on there for a period of time, therefore 10 of the 11 members of council will have to affirm the appointment.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll so move on that one.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Bartholomew made the motion, Mr. Reeds made the second.
And I'm going to make this very, very easy for everybody tonight. I've had a lot of conversations with the chairman, Mr. Presnell, who was the other candidate, as well as Patrick Mitchell. Mr. Presnell has agreed, everybody's on board with Patrick Mitchell being reappointed to this stormwater.
Okay. Okay? Any other discussion?
He made a motion.
You made a motion?
Okay, any other discussion? Saying none, this will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Okay, we are at the second citizen comments, we have a couple people that want to talk about Pine Island, so Ms. Hayes, would you come forward? You will have three minutes to address County Council. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening, thank you guys for allowing me. Greetings to you all. My name is Ahava and first I would like to address Mr. York Glover, just about the email that I sent last week. I was trying to get some artifacts from you just to add, because I was doing a scorecard for you to show the community what you're doing for them and I didn't get any response. So I have, she's going to bring you guys what I was able to come up with, with what I was able to find, because I looked and couldn't find anything, so I was trying to get him to send me some, but to no avail, I didn't get anything, so this is what I was able to come up with. Gets up here. Furthermore, the CPO and the department, excuse me, the CPO and the development of Pine Island is not as straightforward as it seems. There's been a lot of misinformation about the cultural protection overlay on St. Helena Island. While the CPO was meant to prevent gentrification and protect the Gullah culture, it's not working as intended. Now, CCL, Penn Center, and the CPO Committee is pressuring the developers to build 160-plus homes, a move that could bring a far more negative impact to the land, waterways, and the community than a golf course would. Ironically, building homes actually increases the risk of displacement, something the CPO was supposed to prevent. The language of the CPO was meant to protect the land and the culture, but the committee pushing for 160-plus homes instead of the conservation with the golf contradicts that objective. The community has also been misled into believing that stopping the golf course will stop the developers from developing Pine Island. This is incorrect, this is not correct. The land has been purchased legally, was not stolen from the Gullah people. There are, there was already a pre-existing 168-home subdivision and the developers already hold 100 septic tank permits to proceed. So the idea that the developers just came in and ignored local voices is false. In fact, two years ago, local leaders accepted a proposal that reduced the original development scope, keeping the golf course with added community benefits. This was a compromise that went in line with the CPO, but nobody is talking about that. The local leaders that accepted the proposal two years ago was 17 so-called pastors and leaders that actually walked the land of Pine Island and broke bread with the developers. Those are Pastor Doe, Pastor Hodges, Pastor Simmons, Deacon Smalls, Pastor Latson, Pastor Ritter, and Pastor Chisholm. It also is worth noting that the CPO restrictions are having unintended consequences such as limiting economic opportunities for Gullah residents on the island. Homeowners are struggling with restrictive zoning, which limits the value of their property and can lead them to tax sales. Businesses that could benefit the community like Penn Center Hotel Restaurant are not allowed within the CPO.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Good afternoon. I stand in support of Pine Island and Mr. Elvio Trappiano's project, Pine Island. I'm not too hard on a golf course, but it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity for us to take care of our children in, on St. Helena Island and what it does, it creates jobs, education, and a lift up for our children. It's time to stop listening to people who think they're helping our people and not really helping them. If I take an oath as a postmaster and I know something is better for my people, I won't let them go down the well just like, just because the well is there. I have to stand up and be honest with them, be truthful, and I think Mr. Trappiano has been truthful from the beginning. When I started on this project, he was the same story, we haven't changed one line, the people have been misled, they change another, they make another story up, and that's not the case with us. We have been working diligently on St. Helena Island to improve with Mr. Trappiano's help. We've helped a lot of people on St. Helena and he's not one to brag about it, so I'm going to tell about it a little bit for him, because he does a lot of work for a lot of people and I think he has the county moving in a good direction right now. Even though you might not admit it, he's one that is doing something to change the environment of St. Helena. The CPO is stopping us from achieving the goals of getting funds for our children, for the school, for the education. The CPO does not allow us to, does not allow the children to have an opportunity to get a good education if they don't go to college or go out of the community, they're left on St. Helena Island. An opportunity like a golf course, but the University of South Carolina Lowcountry Technical College would bring a curriculum that children can learn how to manage and control a golf course from Beaufort, South Carolina to New Zealand. It's such an easy fix and the people I think on the opposition, they want the same things we want, but they just don't know how to come about to say it. They have shouted the same thing we shout every day, we want a better community for our children and that's the case. Thank you so much.
Mr. Terrell.
Good evening, Chairman and Council. Now, I'm not here to speak about Pine Island, so I don't know if you want me to revert back into, okay? But since I'm here and we are talking about Pine Island, I find it very interesting, you can find $4.3 million for a rich man's toy, but can't find any money for a community center on St. Helena. Just let that sit in for a second. You talk about the CPO and how it works, but you know how it works. If we can't generate income on St. Helena, we're not in the tax conversation. Well, we can't get in the tax conversation unless we have commerce and this is what I'm here to talk about. I sent an email to you, if you haven't read it, I'll read from it very briefly, as I know my time is short. I'm here to formally introduce a community-driven initiative to establish the St. Helena Economic Development Committee. This committee seeks to align with the county's broader goals while focusing on specifically creating sustainable economic opportunities and fostering growth on St. Helena Island. This will be a collaborative body to represent and advocate, to guide and steer sustainable economic initiatives and to work towards the creation of an economic district centered around the commercial areas along Highway 21, MLK Drive, and the Corners Community. Our vision includes the development of a vibrant downtown economic district on St. Helena Island that supports local businesses, enhances cultural heritage, and builds long-term economic sustainability. As part of our immediate efforts, we request permission for the following, and that's what I'm asking here tonight, that we can get permission to begin this work. I'm requesting that we be allowed to host an economic market every first Saturday beginning in January at the intersection of MLK and St. Helena Parkway. The market will operate between the hours of 4:00 and 7:00 p.m., providing local vendors, artisans, particularly those of Gullah Geechee Heritage, an opportunity to showcase and sell their goods. This initiative is inspired by successful models such as Beaufort's First Fridays, Port Royal's Farmer Market, and our own heritage celebration. Port Royal's Farmer Market, and our own Heritage Celebration. We would need a road closure at twenty-one, intersection of twenty-one, which has an ingress, ingress on Halifax Drive and also through the back way at Parkers. We've already worked with Parkers to get a letter of support, allowing traffic to be rerouted, so as not to cause any confusion and minimal disruption. And so, I'm here asking now. I spoke with Councilman Glover after a CPO meeting and brought this to attention. Also spoke on the phone with Councilman Bartholomew. And I would like to get that motion so we can first get that approval and then reach out to DOT and take the next steps in creating this first Saturday, which is a great thing for St. Helena Island and it's a solution, instead of all the problem finding in terms of economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Blount.
Before I yield, so is there any way we can get a motion on the floor to get that approved?
No.
Okay, so could you tell us what would be the process in getting that approved?
You're going to have to start with exactly what you're looking for. Road closures go through the sheriff's office. Permits for the markets have to go through bodies and administration. So, your best to deal with...
Oh, Chuck.
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 All right. Chuck, meet me in the back. Thank you, guys. Have a good one.
Chuck, meet me in the back.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. My name is Jendia Blunt. I'm the founder of Smoke Athletics League and the Henry Clay Foundation. Mark five, Matthew five and sixteen says, "Let your light so shine before men that they may see your good works and glorify your Father in heaven." And tonight, I want to speak about good works. I want to speak about the good works that unfortunately are not being considered in this controversy, if you will, behind Pine Island. But I want to personally... I was going to read a prepared statement, but I want to speak to you from the heart tonight. I want to personally tell you guys how I have been able to impact the youth in our community with the help and the platform that was given to me by Mr. Brown and Mr. Elvio Tropiano and the platform and the building that's been provided for my youth in the space at eight oh eight Sea Island Parkway. I have young men and women who are dealing with real heavy things. These kids deal with suicidal ideation. They deal with identity crises. They deal with bullying by the teachers and the students in the school system. So, this program that I provide for them is an outlet. We not only provide them with mentorship, we also provide them with tutoring. We do ACT and SAT test prep, as well as ASVAP test prep. I take them on college campus visits so that they can envision themselves on the college campus. But I also celebrate the kids that are not four-year ready. I want to normalize celebrating children who want to go into a career pathway and support them in ways that they can do that and introduce them to the things that you guys have readily available to them, like CCL and different programs and opportunities that they can do trades if they are not ready or prepared to go to a four-year university. So, we are exacting the change that we want to see in this community with the help of the people that are providing that for us. We believe that Pine Island Golf Course would further allow us to do that by providing a bigger and a better space for us to allow them to do the things that we've been doing here in their own community. Why should we have to travel fifty and a hundred, you know, miles plus to compete at competitive levels in NFL flag football or in AAU basketball when we have a beautiful town here that they can do that? But we don't have the infrastructure to support doing so. We don't have the space and we don't have the hospitality to do that. If we turn on hospitals, if we allow the campuses here to be turned on, then we can host that. We can bring that kind of revenue to our own community and to Beaufort County. Thank you.
Finally, Ms. Lamarcus.
Good evening. And I hope you all have happy holidays. Get some rest. Twenty twenty-five is going to be, get your tennis shoes on. I was here and heard several of you say that the people spoke when we delivered the defeat of the referendum. I like research and I like numbers. And I just wanted to share that with you because you don't... Hopefully, you don't have time to do it yourself. If the data is correct on the website, we have a hundred-and-twenty-six precincts. Is that correct, Ms. Tavernick?
It's about there, yeah.
Out of those precincts, eighty-seven of them voted no. And thirty-eight voted yes. And there was one tie in your district.
In my district, yeah.
That's significant to all of you because the majority of you voted for the referendum. And I would hope what you're doing now is getting out to talk to people to find out what they want and why what you want didn't, isn't happening. Hilton Head. I'm still researching Hilton Head. But what's important to note with Hilton Head is thirty-two precincts, I think. Am I correct?
Correct.
Sixteen sixteen. Okay?
Split, yeah.
We're split. So, this whole thing is not a slam dunk anywhere except Mr. Bartholomew, almost Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Glover, Ms. Howard. Every precinct voted no in your districts. Okay? That's all. I'm going to lecture you on the numbers. You have to do the rest of it with us. You need to establish some trust with us. And Mr. Passamit, what happened Friday, didn't do that. As a citizen of this county, I am dismayed that any member of this council would have a meeting with Hilton Head Town Council that's not open to the public because you don't want our input and doesn't involve my representative from Hilton Head. Again, you've disrespected him. Again. I don't know who called the meeting. I don't want to know. I know it happened. And any council member that was there should be ashamed of yourselves. Mr. Reitz, I apologize for that.
Thank you. We're going to keep working on that trust factor. I promise you that. Okay. I would ask a member of council to make a motion and second for the following executive session items. Pursuant to South Carolina Code Section thirty dash four, seventy-eight-two, receipt of legal advice where legal advice relates to pending litigation, Beaufort County versus Mashburn et al. Buck Walter Recreation Center, pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four, dash seventy-eight-two, to receive legal advice on matters related to a pending threatened or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege to Fusky Island Ferry, pursuant to South Carolina Code Section thirty dash oh-four seventy-eight-two, to receive legal advice regarding pending threatened or potential claims or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of the county in adversary situations involving the assertion of a claim against the county, pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four, seventy-eight-two, receipt of legal advice where legal advice relates to pending litigation, Maria Walls versus Beaufort County, pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four, seventy-eight-two, discussion of negotiations incident to the proposed contractual arrangements, the Oak Tea River Park. A motion, please?
I'll make the motion. It was a mouthful.
Yes, it was. Ms. Tavernick made the motion and Ms. Brown made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will be an executive session, hopefully for forty-five minutes. We hope. And there may well be matters arising out of executive session. Six forty-five.
Okay, we're out of the executive session at 8:05. There is one matter arising out of executive session. I would ask a member of council to move that council authorize the deputy county attorney and our outside counsel for the case of Beaufort County versus Mashburn Construction et al. to negotiate a settlement for an amount as discussed in executive session and the county administrator to execute a settlement agreement for an amount as discussed in executive session. A motion.
I'll motion that.
Ms. Brown makes the motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this item will be approved without objection and I see no objections. There being no further action. We are now adjourned at 8:05 p.m. and happy holidays and happy new year to everyone.
Same to you, Man.
Thank you.